One of our employees who fell sick yesterday, he was in the hospital and keep him and his family in your thoughts. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll call our meeting to order with approval of minutes twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Is there a motion or discussion first?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? First and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next commissioners reports and comments, Vice President Baker, would you begin?
Uh, yeah, a good morning. Like for everyone to take notice, Mr. Michael Schmidt looks pretty handsome here this morning with his new haircut. And, uh, good job. Also, I'd like to send prayers and my heart goes out to the Ralph family and wish him a speedy recovery and getting back to the county. I know he does an outstanding job in the department that he's responsible for and just want to reach out and provide some prayers and hope for Mr. Ralph, thank you. The other thing is congratulations to Brenda Cham for being selected by our central committee for the nomination of the delegate seat that was vacant. And I want to thank our central committee for doing an outstanding job, they made an outstanding selection. I want to thank our central committee for putting their due diligence into interviewing all of the candidates, all four candidates were outstanding individuals in our community and also that's a tough job, I wouldn't want to do, sit there and deliberate and make decisions on who should fill a seat when you're dealing with individuals of quality. And so I just want to thank the central committee for doing a great job with that also, thank you.
Commissioner Kiefer?
Yes, just a reminder to anyone who may be listening today, is the rescheduled date for the Washington County Gives campaign sponsored by the Community Foundation of Washington County, it looks like there are thirteen hours, fifty-six minutes and seven seconds left to give. I gave this morning, three hundred seventy-seven donors have donated so far, a combined amount eighty-five thousand, twenty dollars to seventy-nine different nonprofit organizations in our community. Look through the list, if you have some favors to an organization that helped you or your family or someone you know, maybe consider giving whatever amount you might be able to afford.
Thank you, Commissioner Michael Schmidt?
No comments at this time.
Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, I'm gonna follow up on Terry, I thought they made an excellent pick in Brenda Cham. And everything Commissioner Baker said, I agree with a hundred percent, it was a tough job when you got nine people trying to figure out who they're gonna appoint. Also, congratulations to Garrison Plessinger, the, and his wife had a baby girl, he's our airport director, so congratulations to him. I think that's it for me.
Thank you, again, I would like to congratulate Brenda for her appointment as delegate, a great choice. Our thoughts and prayers do go out to the Roe family for his recent illness and wishing him a speedy recovery. And again, I'd like to announce Washington County Gives today is online, ready for your donation, please support many of the very worthy causes that are participating in Washington County Gives today.
And that concludes my report, we'll now go to staff comments. Please come forward and identify yourself in the subject, sir.
Good morning commissioners, David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services, just a real brief update. I know that this is probably old news from last week, but I'm happy to announce on September the sixteenth, the division was notified that Washington County was a successful recipient of the FEMA SAFRA grant award, which was for the hiring of thirty-three firefighters. That grant originally was just about five million dollars when it had a required match from the county, which was twenty-five percent year one, twenty-five percent year two, and then sixty-five percent year three. The biggest news on top of the fact that we got the grant is the fact that that has been waived and the county will not have a cost share for the firefighters for the first three years outside of what we'll declare as maintenance effort, which includes any approved wages, benefits changes and the like, but generically, the wages are covered with benefits for all three years, so that's tremendous news and we're happy to be there.
So Dave, on the fourth year, what will the county contribution be?
Uh, two point seven million dollars at today's time.
Sorry, percent, just percent?
Uh, one hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're working internally to develop hiring processes with HR and budget finance. We've made a lot of progress on that and again, we'll be in on the twenty-ninth to formally present this to the commissioners to consider for acceptance of the grant award. But I'm just happy to announce that's a great week for Washington County.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave, just one real quick, when will the, when will this all start with actually placing a first per, a first responder in? What's the timeline?
So, the three paramedic firefighters we're actually advertising now to hire, they could be in place in the next thirty to sixty days. But realistically speaking, with moving through hiring processes and a training curriculum, we think we can have the firefighters on board as county employees around February one. And then we're gonna run a two-month academy, which will basically level the playing field and make sure that all of them start at the same level of opportunity. So probably around April first, give or take, we hope to actually have them deployed to the fire departments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I've gotten a lot of, uh, questions about people looking already to apply, so there's a lot of people out there already interested.
Yeah, and I know one of the big questions is can we hire thirty-three? We believe we can, I'm not telling you they're gonna be thirty-three turn key February one, which is why we're gonna run a two-month academy so that we can build up everybody to an equal level and level playing field, and when we put them out on the street, we'll put a respectable and qualified product out there. So we're not just gonna grab what we can get, the best of luck and send them out, so we'll have a defined plan and again, we'll be in next week to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further staff comments in the gallery? Krista?
No, sir.
Mr. Downey?
Uh, just like to thank staff, our division directors and department leaders as we continue to adapt to changing guidelines from the CDC as well as the state as we move through this pandemic environment. We certainly appreciate everyone's cooperation and flexibility and understanding.
All right, Kirk, I just got one question, do we have a plan implemented yet to bring the workers back and some kind of a plan? A pattern, a rotation, or is that being worked on?
It's being discussed and reviewed on a regular basis, at this point in time, obviously, the health authorities from both the state and federal levels are advising that, you know, people who can work from home should still do that. That's happening on a different basis on a department by department label, level. I do know that division directors and department heads are monitoring staff who may be working at home. Some are on altered schedules where a different staff member comes in a different day of the week to staff the department and to respond to messages that may have been left to receive mail, that sort of thing.
Thank you. All right, thank you, next up. Citizens participation, Mr. Devine, I think you've registered, please come forward, state your name and address. Yeah, you're, you're welcome to have a seat there, sir.
James Devine, Post Office, Box two-two-one-seven, Hagerstown, Maryland.
And try to keep your comments within three minutes, but if you need a little extra, we always will accommodate you, okay?
Probably be three minutes. Friday I came here and could not get an agenda, yesterday I called numerous numbers to the commissioners, only got voice recordings. No one to talk to, no one called me back. The voice messages need to be changed too, leave a message, we may or may not call you back, don't hold your breath, have a nice day. I'll record this for you if you want. The deadly and contagious virus will be around for years to come because there is no empathy, feeling, sacrifice for your fellow humans. Face coverings become a political issue, a virus that can affect all body or its heart, brain, lungs, pancreas, blood clots, a virus spread by microdrops. One mic, one micron in size on dust particles and spread by people with no symptoms. Over seven million people infected, almost two million people, two hundred thousand dead. I go to Planet Fitness, they set a policy that people do not have to wear face coverings while working out. I called the Health Department Friday, Saturday, only yesterday did someone talk to me. They was told that they're closed on the weekend. How can they be closed and not be able to maybe stop the deadly virus spread of the virus? The Health Department should have acted on Friday when called and not waited until Monday to act. Lives could be at stake. The Health Department should not wait for a complaint is made and should send its agents to businesses and issue citations to those not wearing coverings and remind management of the face mask requirements. Maybe more funding from the commissioners would help. President who extorted and hid the deadliestness of this virus, killing people in the process. A murderer, a pathological liar, a rapist, above the law. And separated a nation, a dictator, this is what the people are voting for. Could never fully understand the population of Germany, late nineteen thirties to forties. I see the red shirts of the Republican politics fading into the brown shirts. The rules and norms of the nation abandoned, the Senate oath and rules are abandoned. Gerber would be proud of Fox News and the other commentators, where there is alternative realities, lies become truth, white is black. I hear the words of Germany and the Soviet Union, the press is the enemy of the people. I hear these words spoken now. Without truth, there can be no trust, without truth and trust, there can be no nation. I feel the nation is falling into the abyss, which it will never recover from. Sadly, people are not voting for the best of this nation, but it was voting for themselves and the nation be damned. Any questions? They would have to be sent to my voicemail, may or may not return the calls, but don't hold your breath.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With no more citizen participation scheduled, we will now move forward with our investment policy statement update, Sarah. Okay, please introduce yourselves in the matter, please.
Good morning commissioners, Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer, I have here with me today, today Patrick Wing, who is the Vice President of Marquette Associates and our Investment Advisor. Here today to talk to you about updates to our investment policy statement. The investment policy statement, also known as the IPS, sets forth guidelines and objectives for the pension, OPEB and low set plans. It has been reviewed over the past twelve months and updated by the Investment Committee. The IPS serves several purposes. It defines and generally assigns the responsibilities of all involved parties. It establishes a clear understanding of the investment goals and objectives of the funds. It establishes relevant investment horizon for which the fund's assets will be managed. It establishes target asset allocations and rebalancing procedures for the funds. It offers guidance and limitations to all third-party investment funds and managers regarding the investment of assets. And it establishes a basis for evaluating the fund's investment results. Attached to the ARF, you have the current IPS and you have the proposed IPS. While the proposed IPS is longer than the existing IPS, it's mainly due to just adding additional language to the document relative to the way the county has already been operating. There have been a few changes though. There's been language added related to prudence, ethics and conflict of interest. There is a recommendation to add two additional Investment Committee members, including the Director of Budget and Finance and unappointed commissioner. There have been changes to the asset allocations, minimum, maximum and target percentages for each respective fund. And there have been some changes to asset classes and so at this point, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Wing to discuss and provide some context to the additional asset classes that were added.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves, and good morning, everyone, again, my name is Patrick Wing from Marquette Associates. And just to expand on Ms. Greaves' comments quickly, I just wanted to reiterate that when we began working with the county about eighteen months ago, anytime we began a new relationship, taking a look at the investment policy statement is the first thing that we do at the beginning of a relationship, just to ensure that the statement is consistent with industry best practices and provides a good roadmap for anybody acting on behalf of the fund, including ourselves, including representatives of the county, provide a strategic guideline for how the fund should be invested. So as Ms. Greaves mentioned, we took a pretty long process to get to where we are today for what we're putting in front of you. And we took a look at a couple of things during our exercises. Importantly, as it relates to asset allocation, we looked at how other counties are invested, including the eighteen counties we work with in Maryland and Pennsylvania, to give the Investment Committee an idea of what other asset classes or investment opportunities these other peer funds are using in their pension, low-seb and OPEB funds. And then we took a long process educating the committee about the various new asset classes, about why they would be beneficial, the pros and cons, what they are. And also, again, as I mentioned, showing that other counties have a sizable allocation to these asset classes outside of equities and fixed income, usually on the order of ten to twenty percent, so it was certainly, we believe, a long and thoughtful process. So just wanted to make a couple of quick comments on the additional asset classes you see below in bullets. First being real estate. So real estate is an investment predominantly used for investments in commercial property. Say retail buildings, office buildings, industrial buildings and multifamily apartments. It's been a part of institutional investment portfolios for probably four or five decades now. So very long-used asset class for many institutional investors and like all the asset classes you'll see below, that provides more diversification for the overall fund, which right now just calls for investments in equities and fixed income. The second there being private infrastructure is similar to commercial real estate. However, the underlying assets are a little different, so instead of properties, we're talking about assets that are really the backbone of the economy, things like toll roads, rails, electric utilities, water, gas, things of that nature. Also more topical investments like satellite towers, broadcast networks, again, things that are the backbone of the economy that are really the prerequisite for economic growth. The third there, you see options, defensive equity, this is a strategy, like the others above, I should mention, and the one below it, that is intended to provide similar returns to equity markets, but also with lower volatility or lower risk. And the final there, private credit, is an investment, a private investment in the debt offerings of private companies. So one of the challengers that institutional investors face today is fixed income, traditional fixed income. And we all know interest rates are extremely low in fixed income, you know, we go to look for a CD at a bank, might pay us one percent over five years. So unfortunately, that's much lower than history, right? And if you have a sizable proportion of your fund allocated to fixed income, it's a big headwind to get to where you need to be or to hit the actuarial assumed rate of return of seven percent. So what private credit does is essentially makes investments in private, the debt of private companies, but historically has provided a additional return or premium return of about three to four percentage points over regular fixed income. So we think the additional asset classes, think of it just as expanding the investment toolkit of the fund, really has a couple of main benefits. It will increase the diversification of the fund and with increased diversification, you can have benefits such as perhaps lower volatility or risk, increased return expectations, or a combination of the two. But incorporating these other asset classes, as I mentioned, many other counties have already done, would again, at the end of the day, we believe, ensure the probability of success. So what we mean by that, the respective funds meeting their assumed rate of returns over the long term to essentially ensure that the assets are gonna be there over the long term to fulfill the promised benefit payments. And then finally, I wanted to point out in the bullet below that certain asset classes may require a third-party contract between the county and the investment manager. And what I mean by that is what we put in the investment policy is that the chairperson would be an authorized signer, along with a number, another member of the committee, so that county representatives are always on those specific contracts. And I would point out again, those eighteen other counties that I referenced a minute ago, with their allocations of about ten to twenty percent across these asset classes above, is exactly how that's operated as well, a third-party agreement between the county and an investment manager.
So sort of in layman's terms, which that was pretty good, actually, for layman's terms.
I appreciate that.
You got your four added language of your four bullet points there. And a sort of a quick summary, which you did a pretty good job of that, too. What does that, why, why do it and what does, is there an expense related to that to add these?
There's no expense related to add these, I think the primary reasons for doing so is to add diversification for the funds.
So it's basically?
And trying to get us in line with some, with what some of our peers are doing as well, so adding these asset classes will help.
Basically a broader brush.
That's right.
Right, just expanding the toolkit of what's allowable.
The tool is in the toolbox.
I, from reviewing this earlier, I think there's a one, I think a clerical alert, just a typo. I thought it was supposed to be an appointee of the commissioners, not a commissioner itself. So that the commissioners appointed a person on the, on the board.
I think that the Investment Committee had had several discussions on that and decided that it would be more relevant to have a commissioner on the board, um, or a commissioner on the committee? If that's something that you would like the commissioners to maybe discuss further?
There you go. I, I'm fine with it, um, but.
I think it was our intent, court, to have a commissioner appointed and not necessarily a member of the public.
Okay.
Um, I think after additional conversations with the county administrator and the legal team, it was decided against that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine, I just, I remember the initial discussion.
I also questioned it the first time around, so I understand your question.
That's perfect, and then, uh, Randy, just one of the clarifications I know in going over this, with our pension's assumed rate of return being as high as it is, one of the things that we had a difficulty with the current investment policy statement is you had a target range of about thirty-three percent in fixed bonds and two percent in cash, about thirty-five percent in fixed interest rates, earning you significantly lower than what our assumed rate of return was, so we were basically handicapping our investment professionals on trying to get to that assumed rate of return. So by giving them more flexibility in other asset classes, the probability of us hitting our assumed rate of return has increased.
That sounds like a yes to you, right?
So in saying that, commissioners, if, if you have any questions, we're happy to take those at this time. Um, and if you don't, we'd be looking for today a motion to approve the proposed investment policy statement.
So we are gonna, we are or we are not going to request a commissioner to be on this board?
We are going to request the commissioners as a body to appoint one commissioner to sit on the Investment Committee, yes.
Terry just volunteered for the.
I, I just asked the question.
Sarah, who are the other members of the committee?
The members of the committee currently include the Chief Financial Officer, the County Administrator and the Director of Human Resources. Uh, this policy as proposed, in, in addition to those three members, includes the Director of Budget and Finance and an appointed commissioner. I didn't leave anyone out, right?
No.
Okay.
And just quickly, I think it's also worth mentioning, which, apologies if it was already mentioned, that the, the new document was reviewed by the county's legal counsel as well.
That's right.
Is there an issue with having both an appointed commissioner and a member of the public? Is there a reason that's not appropriate or?
There's, Kirk, I don't know if you wanna take this question, um, you know, we had talked to benefits council about that. Um, it didn't seem like that was recommended by council and that's why we chose against adding that member.
If, if I could just jump in quickly to everyone, that would be more of an anomaly than typical for, for county. County Investment Committee typically, it's comprised by all county representatives and not a, not a third party from the public, just for additional context for you all.
That's fine, I think we all just like the idea of citizen input when, uh, all things county related.
Sure.
Then I make the motion to approve the new and updated investment policy statement.
First, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next up, fourth quarter adjustments to the Washington County Board of Education.
I saw Dr. Michael in the chambers back there, I just want to thank you for doing an outstanding job guiding our local education institution. And, uh, I don't know how you do it, to be honest with you, it's a tough, tough, tough time to be in charge right now, but anyhow, thank you for everything you do.
Good morning, gentlemen, welcome, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioner Kiefer, Chief Operating Officer, David Ryan, Inspector of Finance for the Board of Ed. Before you this morning, commissioners, are the fourth quarter budget adjustments for the Washington County Public School System. As you know, based on COMAR, we have to re-forecast the budget periodically based on actuals and forecasted adjustments that need to be made. With the fourth quarter, these represent the final end of the year results of the operations of the school system. These adjustments were approved by the full board at its business meeting last Tuesday, September fifteenth, and previous to that by the Board's Finance Committee. And we're happy to take any questions you may have on these adjustments.
I've, I've got a couple. Can you explain the increase of almost a million dollars for the maintenance of plants and additional deferred maintenance projects?
Right, so we took an opportunity with the school system being closed to take on many more projects this spring and into the summer to keep up with things like bright carpets, bad painting, we did a rehab on a, on a portable at Potomac Heights that needed to be taken care of, several seal coating, taping projects or concrete projects were done on exterior buildings. Uh, so we had an opportunity with the buildings being closed to get significant amount of work done, which increased the value with inside maintenance of plants.
So the, well, is that Western Heights or is it Potomac Heights?
Uh, Potomac Heights is a rehab, the Western Heights portable is actually listed under Capital Outlet.
That was getting, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was.
And that's, that's a new four-pack portable that's being installed at Western Heights to handle additional staff capacity. Uh, we've added additional staff at Western Heights to handle the enrollment at Western Heights and also to offer additional math classes to students specifically to get them in smaller groups and provide additional math services. to get them in smaller groups and provide additional math services.
Then the million dollars for student health-related services, this is the contract that was not paid for the, the nurses?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then can you explain, because I know we haven't received the funding for the last SRO payment. Is that in this or is that going to be on the next one? Or is that still expected to be paid?
So we sent a notice to Mr. Downey of how we appropriated Q3 based on the services that were actually received at the school system for county SROs. I processed this morning a similar adjustment for Q4, which will be paid this week, I believe.
It'll be paid on Thursday, yes.
You know, we're, we're paying for services that are received and rendered to the school system and services that are not received. I mean, it's our understanding that the officers that normally fill the SRO process position for both the county and the city were on patrol.
That, that's incorrect. They actually can't go into patrol, because if they go into patrol and they issue a citation, then they could have to be back in court when they are back in the school. And so then they wouldn't be able to provide their jobs. They did not go back onto, onto patrol. And that is a, is actually part of the contract. One of the things with the SROs is, and I'll use the EMS as an example. So when somebody goes, has a heart attack or whatever, and they get the insurance bill, they get a pretty hefty bill. That individual call was not what it cost. They had, we had to have the people staffed, we had to have the training, you had all of that. So that had to account for this. It's the same thing with the SROs. The SROs are, are there for you. And even though they're not there performing their job, that's just, that's their time, they still have to be prepared to do that job when you need them back. So we're, we're going to have to look at that, because I don't agree with not paying the contracted services for the SROs, because they could not go back onto patrol.
I guess my question would be, what's the contract say? Is it a yearly contract? Is there any provision? A contract with the, with us or the sheriff that would not, that you don't have to pay if there, if there's no school? Is there any provision in that contract?
It is a yearly MOU that's, that's amended annually. We've taken the position of the legal position of impossibility as the reason for not paying that, that bill. And Commissioner Monischmidt, if, if our assumption of on patrol was not accurate, I'll review that. But that was the assumption we were given by both the sheriff and by Chief Kifer. And I can review that with both of them as well.
You, you can, because I contacted Sheriff Mullendor yesterday about this, and he said, no, he cannot put them out on patrol because of those exact reasons that I just stated. So that, again, is incorrect.
Understood.
So that, that's something that I, you know, I, I have a difficulty trying to, to look at these things. And then when the last thing, when I have a difficulty is, you know, we, and I applaud you as the, the, the school system for continuing to pay all of your employees, even though some of them were required not to go to work. But then at the same time, the nurses who were required not to go to work did not get paid because they were not your employees. So I have, I have a difficulty with that. I also have a difficulty moving 1.2 million dollars to an undesignated fund balance. I would like to see where that money is going to be spent. I know you constantly tell the county commissioners and the newspapers, hey, you know, if this was capital money, we'd get 79% matching funds for it. So I'd like to see, you know, what this 1.2 million dollars is going to be used for instead of just going to an undesigned.
We can provide that as the money is used, Commissioner. One of the concerns moving forward is that we are hedging against what may be an underfunded year in FY '22. So there's a high likelihood with decreases in enrollment that state funding and our county funding will be reduced in FY '22. So we do need a fund balance to be prepared to bridge the gap till we can get to FY '23. So at this point, I think it'd be premature to earmark that money. It's also worth noting that the board's fund balance policy calls for approximately, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, 30 to 45 days of operating expense in fund balance that does not account for money that the county has in its own fund balance. So really just 30 to 45 days of what would be state funding if there is a, an unforeseen drop in, in state funding.
So how much is in the undesigned fund balance currently?
Five, 5.1 million dollars. And actually, the policy mirrors the county's policy, but we took out the portion covered by the county, because you figured that you're reserving that. So our 45 to 60 days of everything other than the county funding would really amount to 24 to 32 million dollars. And our fund balance with this 1.2 million dropping to that is only 5.1 million dollars.
So I, I just personally, I can't agree moving it to the undesigned fund. If it was moved to administration, instructional, tech, you know, something of that sort, because like you said, if it needs to be moved, then it can get moved again, but...
Well, it, it wasn't spent within the year, which is why it drops to the fund balance, of course. In which case it can then be picked up in the budget for FY '22 and allocated to one of those funds to, to cover any budget shortfalls there may be in, for FY '22.
Correct.
But again, if we do that, then that'll reduce the, the fund balance that's already well below the, the limit that's provided by the policy. And, and, and below that level that's the, that the county commissioners keep on, on their books also.
So I guess some confusion. You met with Sheriff Mullendor and Chief of, of Mr. Kifer. And what you're presenting here, they're saying is well within the MOU or policy that's in place. And court said he talked with the sheriff yesterday. And so I guess, I'm not sure what the correct answer is there, but you're going to reach back out to the sheriff and you're going to reach back out to Mr. Kifer. And if things need to be corrected, then you'll follow the policy in the, in the MOU to make sure everything's correct and accurate.
Correct. And if it's deemed that that value should be paid, it'll likely come out of FY '21 operations, since the books are already fully closed and the audit is completed for FY '20.
You're saying these MOUs are negotiated yearly?
Yes, sir.
Then there's something in the next contract, we can make more specifics, so there's no confusion, and we can be collegiate about this and have the clarity.
Absolutely.
That would be my recommendation.
That's our thought as well, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So with that, you're okay with moving forward with the...
Well, I'd like to get the questions answered first about Chief Kifer and Sheriff Mullendor's decision or comments about, do they go on?
We, we can do that and provide...
If we can do it, I would, I would prefer that Sheriff Mullendor is here with us, so we can ask him the same questions at the time, because we're already having a disagreement with it, and I knew who I talked to last night. And so if he'd be willing to come and discuss it, then I'm, I'd be okay with that.
We hold this off for another week, then?
That's, would be fine.
Dr. Michaels, would you like, you're welcome to come forward.
I don't know if it's a disagreement. I think it's just a misunderstanding or something.
Reading of a contract. Sir, please proceed.
I just want to be sure that I'm correct. So, Mr., did we send a letter to the county regarding this topic?
We did.
And did we hear anything back from the county specifically about the topic?
We did not.
I mean, that's where we are. We sent a letter describing our position. We could have talked about that with Sheriff Mullendor, with the county staff, with whoever. And we put something formally in writing, didn't hear anything. But I think it's in the county's court to look at that. We're certainly, we meet with Sheriff Mullendor next Monday for our safety committee and Mr. Kifer. We certainly want to support the officers. I don't know what they've been doing since March 13th, but surely they're serving the county in some capacity for the last six or seven months. And we might be three or four months until we need them again. We paid our contractual obligations to people who have rendered services, similar to Meritas, who wasn't rendering services. We didn't want to see the nurses. The nurses are kind of, they're not part of our staff, but they're part of our staff family. But we didn't have a contractual obligation to pay them. We're audited, the same as you're audited. We have requirements to pay bills that are due. And we can't just freely pay employees and the, and the resource officers aren't our employees, they're your employees. But I think it's just something to consider. But we did formally ask about this, and we received no response. And that's been three months ago, four months ago.
Did, Dr. Michael, did, did you get a bill from the county for?
We got a bill, and that's what we responded to in writing, is about the bill.
So when was it sent? Was something, I mean, was something else sent to them after?
A subsequent bill was sent.
So a subsequent bill was sent, so you did get a response.
Okay, I won't argue about that. We paid a $22 light bill that's probably going to cost us all a couple hundred dollars in staff time back and forth out on Mugglesville Avenue. I mean, it's kind of silly, some of this stuff. But if that's the response, is that we just get another bill? And when we send a formal letter in writing, we'll, we'll know that in the future.
Yeah, and then we have future negotiations that that could be clearly defined. Would that be acceptable?
So if they're out for the entire year, the expectation would be that Washington County would pay them. And they're staying home, they can't do patrol, they can't do any work for anybody. Is that correct?
No, they're not, it's not that they can't, they cannot do patrol, but they can do work. But they have to be, they can't, the reason why they can't do patrol is because of the issue of citation. They could have to go to court at a later date. And let's say school started, let's say they were back out and school started in September or November or whenever, and now they have to go to a court date. Then they cannot be doing their job as an SRO, because they have to be in court. So they cannot be sent back out on patrol. And another comment is they have been requested and used recently by the school system. There's a little bit more than a dozen times that the school system has requested an SRO to be there, and they were there. So yes, it's only been a couple times since August, but they're still being utilized. And if they were out on patrol, they couldn't have been utilized. So we had, the sheriff department had to make sure that they were available for whenever you needed them. And that's, that's problem. Maybe, maybe they're not there sitting there doing everything, but they had to be available for your use. And so that's the problem.
Mr. Downey has a comment. Sorry to interrupt.
I was going to say, the issue is that we have built an overhead at your request, because the, the deputies would normally be serving in the role of school resource officer. And I understand that when schools close, there was no reason to have a deputy sitting there with an empty building. And I also understand that WCPS would not want to pay for what they perceive as services that they're not receiving. But the fact of the matter is, at the end of the day, we're still eating those costs. And quite frankly, I understand your legal position. I'm not necessarily saying whether I agree with it or not. I don't really want to ask a judge to determine what should happen in this circumstance, because quite frankly, the memorandum of unders, understanding with the public schools does not address what happens if there's a pandemic and schools have to close for a long-term basis. I mean, that really wasn't anticipated when this was put together. It was more of a straightforward agreement where you run the schools, you need the deputies, and we provide them, you reimburse us for the deputies' salaries and expenses. So going forward, perhaps what we should do is have some conversations in terms of when you're going to anticipate needing the deputies back in the schools, and we can figure out some way to, to make this work.
Right. I mean, that's what we're looking forward to. I mean, the deputies, much like the nurses, are part of the family of Washington County Public Schools, but they're not our employees, just like the nurses. And there weren't services rendered, so that's just kind of how we looked at it a little bit. But again, we provide written communication to receive a bill. If that's the response from the county, that's your standard operating procedure. That's not how we operate in Washington County Public Schools, but we'll be reminded of that in the future.
That comment's not really necessary. We're trying to be collegiate here and offering, that's sort of a slam on us, Dr. Michaels.
Exactly right, Mr. Christopher. We write you a letter and we receive a bill.
To throw a slam out like that, we've been very cordial with you, and I reject that comment like that, so respectfully. But we're going to work this out.
It, it'll be easily worked out, I'm sure.
And I kindly offered in the next MOU that we discuss these difficulties or these oddities in a contract as part of working together.
It'd be nice if, like the other 22 counties, to pay for the resource officers with county funds instead of school system funds. You'd already have it worked out. It'd be on your side of the bill, like the other 22 counties.
Is there any more comments from the commissioners? Is there a motion, or are we going to bring this back?
I would like to bring this back, just to comment. If there's ever a question that you need from us, work through your elected board members. I, I speak to your board members on a regular basis. If you need information from us you think you're not getting, I reach out to them, they answer. They reach out to me for other issues, and I answer.
We'll provide top of the written communication.
Sheriff Mullendor just walked in. If we could clarify part of this issue right now. So...
Welcome home.
So we had a discussion earlier, and I know I, we, we talked last night about the SROs. I guess Mr. Jeff Prue contacted you earlier, and you said that you're moving the, the SROs out to patrol. And I kindly told him that that's not true, because of what we talked about, having to go to court, and they can't issue citations. So if we could clarify that, that statement, that'd be great.
He's probably going to need a microphone.
Just come on up, please.
Come on forward. So commissioners, the SROs are available at any time to go back to the schools or anything that, that they need. You know, they have periodically requested that we perform certain duties, which we have done. We cannot use them on regular patrol, because if they make an arrest or they write a citation, when they do go back to school, they're going to end up at court, which is not something that's appropriate either. So we've been using them for mundane duties. We have used them for watching traffic, for example, at the COVID testing sites and things of that nature. But we have not used them on patrol in the normal sense of the word.
Sheriff, was it your understanding that, that this is a yearly contract? That they should, no matter what, I know we don't have a crystal ball of what's going to happen in the future. But it seems like, to me, the, it's a contractual obligation. To me, we're bearing some of the cost, because your deputies, not ineffective, but can't really be out there protecting the citizens, basically. And I, I just have some problems with that, you know, the, you know, this seems like almost such a subject to even be talking about, but just...
I understand.
Would you have the same number of deputies if you did not have to provide school resource officer services?
I'm not sure I understand that question, Kirk. So if, if we didn't supply SROs, then the county would have to make a decision whether we laid them off or whether we add them into the number of deputies that we have, because they're contractually paid for by the school board. So that would be a burden to the county, and the county would make a decision at that point.
So the intent of this contract was to reserve these SROs for the whole year for the school?
That's correct.
And based on that budget for that. So by the misinterpretation or whatever the judgment is, they're going to pay for services rendered. But this is a one-year contract that could be renewed, and all this could be discussed and negotiated out. Would that, does that make sense?
Understood.
Means no different than what we have with Meritas. You know, they pay for that, those deputies that, that work there. So if something happened there and they didn't need them, then, you know, the decision would have to be made as to whether they get laid off or what happens with their positions.
How many, how many deputies are you down right now?
None.
Oh, so you're completely staffed?
In, in the patrol division. I'm not in jail. I'm down about 15 in the jail.
Okay. But they don't fall under the category of...
No, they're not train correctional. All right, Sheriff, thank you. Commissioners, it's your pleasure. Bring it back. I vote on it today. Is there a motion?
Commissioners, if I may?
Please do.
Again, if a decision is made to pay the SROs, FY '20 is, for our purposes, effectively closed. So the expense would now move into FY '21. So these budget adjustments would not be affected by any payment to the SRO program at this point. So I'm not sure it brings merit to postpone the approval of this, of these adjustments at this time pending that payment.
I, I've already said, I personally, I would like to see what this 1.2 million dollars is going to be used for instead of going to the undesigned fund. I'd like to see some more detail.
We're working with the pandemic. We spent over a billion dollars on PPE materials. Some of that's been reimbursed by the CARES money. We're just getting started with students back. We don't know if students will remain for the rest of the year. Heard the sheriff talk about the potential of laying off the deputies. We're looking at laying off a thousand people. A thousand people in Washington County if we can't keep schools open. And we're talking about four or five deputies here. But again, we need support from the county commissioners. The 1.2 million we might need for PPE, I do not know. We might be short 15 or 20 million dollars to be flat next year. The 1.2 million will be in the undesigned fund balance. That is my recommendation to the board, and the board approved that on Tuesday. So we don't know what purpose it is. You just heard Mr. Brandenburg say 5.1 million is all we're setting on for a reserve fund. If we're shorted by, and you all, you asked two or three board meetings ago... could you give less with maintenance of effort? Maintenance of effort's the same amount of money per student, it does not change. Over down over a thousand students. Yes, there's great potential, you could cut us several million dollars, next year the kids will be back. So the expenses won't change for next year. But your input to the county certainly could be less. But we'll have to pick up that expense from somewhere, it might have to come from the fund balance. There's every possibility this year we're gonna finish in the negative fund balance, we might be coming to you this time next year with a, with a net zero, or net something below zero. And what'll be taken from our fund balance would be our request to make us whole. So, there won't be a decision about the one point two million, I don't mean to be anything other than dishonest with you, we need to keep that in a reserve fund. Five percent, understand it, three percent, three million dollars is one percent of our budget. One percent of our budget, five point one million be one and two-thirds of a percent? How many of you spend your personal budget down to ninety-nine percent? I mean, we're hit or miss by a couple million bucks is, is big money for us in Washington County. But it's not that much money when you're looking at three hundred million dollars, just in operating money.
And for me, you know, the times that we're in, I have all of the confidence in the world in his staff trying to put all of these numbers together. They're trying to plan for the future, trying to get ready so that, you know, all of the unexpected costs coming to them. They said if there's a mistake or there's some confusion with the SROs, they're going to make it right, it'll just be the following year's budget. With me, I'm gonna be okay with moving forward with the recommendation today, and that's gonna be a motion. And, you know, they need to do their work, and we need to put our trust into them, I put the, I put my trust into their elected body, they've supported this. So for me, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we move forward with this today.
Is there a second? Call one more time for a second. Motion dies for lack of a second, we'll get you rescheduled shortly. Thank you for your honest and open conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, audit and agreed-upon procedures for fire companies, Sarah.
Good morning, commissioners, Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer here to discuss audit and agreed-upon procedures for the fire companies. Today, I'm asking the commissioners for some direction or consensus on how to move forward, if and how to move forward with this process. So the commissioners in the past have expressed some interest in procuring a financial statement audit and/or some agreed-upon procedures for the independent fire companies. In FY twenty, the commissioners did award a contract for emergency services, special procedures, and auditing service. So there's been discussion in applying similar procedures for the fire departments, fire companies. So just as a recap, real quick, financial statement audits involve performing procedures to obtain evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. So they focus on accounting controls, substantive and analytical procedures that impact the general ledger or sub ledger systems. And then the auditors will give an opinion on whether or not the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Agreed-upon procedures is a second set of procedures that can be utilized to kind of dig into more detail for certain things, such as ERISA compliance, payroll processing, travel expenditures, related party transactions, things of that sort. So these would be other procedures outside of a financial statement audit. The estimated cost for financial statement audit would be roughly around a hundred and forty-four thousand for all eighteen fire companies, and we're estimating about ninety thousand for agreed-upon procedures. So I'm here today to discuss these options with you, to see if this is something that the Board of County Commissioners would like to move forward with. And if so, if it would just be a financial statement audit, if you would like procedures to be written, we could do that as well, but just to have some discussion regarding the topic.
You know, this has been going on for about a year now, and I'm not throwing stones, but we should have, we did the EMS companies, and it came out pretty good, it was a teaching, a teaching experience for them. We know we have some problems in the system, you know, that's came to light, and with that being said, you know, a lot of things I might agree on is based on an audit, and I, I made that pretty clear a year ago, you know, my agree with shoring up the fire departments, helping them all, making sure we shore up the volunteers, keeping the volunteers as many as we can get. A lot of that, to me, was, my agreement to do that was based on an audit. So, I, you know, I, if we don't audit, I mean, this is my opinion, and we have to audit. It teaches better practices, it gets their bookkeeping in, in shape, and it could save us a bunch, we could save a lot more than two hundred and forty, thirty-four thousand with an audit with better accounting practices. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm totally, I'd say we have to audit both, both options.
Okay. Did we, when we did the EMS, we did both, correct?
We did.
And we just went back two years for that?
We did two thousand and eighteen, the year of two thousand and eighteen, and so in this case, we would suggest using fiscal year nineteen, or some have calendar year, some have fiscal year.
I'm, I'm in agreement.
So fiscal year two thousand and nineteen would not involve COVID, so that would be before COVID.
That's right. That's correct. And the reason for fiscal, for two thousand and nineteen to be the year, some have calendar year, so that's the most recent calendar year end to be able to be audited.
So do they all do calendar year, or just some do calendar year?
Some companies, I don't have that in front of me, but some companies have a six thirty year end, and other companies have the twelve thirty-one year end, and so for fiscal year nineteen, in some cases, it would be six thirty nineteen, and in other cases, twelve thirty-one nineteen.
Just for, just for clarity, did we not already vote on this in the past to move forward with these audits for the fire companies? Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we voted, if I remember correctly, we voted that we were going to do them, but we were gonna start with the EMS.
And then it wasn't in the budget, correct?
That's correct, these are unbudgeted funds, and so as it relates to that topic, we as staff would need to know where the funding would come from to provide for these audits. Two relevant sources, one could be the twenty-five percent that we have budgeted for the SAFER grant, another source could be to take it from reserves.
I think the audits for EMS turned out to be a positive thing, there was one problem, but I think overall that we demonstrated we were there to help improve our accounting practices, and one fire chief told me if they were doing something not the best way, he was more than willing to do it. So I think the audits, both levels would be what I would support, is there any other comments?
I would support both levels as well, as Commissioner Klein said. Roughly about how much money rounded to the nearest, you know, thousand, ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, no coins back.
Do we provide to fire in EMS companies?
To them directly, or on their behalf and to them?
Both.
I think about fifteen million, Dave?
Fifteen million, yeah.
Which includes on their behalf and to them directly.
And that's the same amount, if not larger than some of our county departments, and I think when the county goes through our annual budget or audit review process, we probably include every department within the county's budget for an audit, so I think an amount that significant is also due in audit, and our EMS companies, I know some EMS companies weren't realizing that there were reimbursements available to them that they didn't apply for. So some companies benefited from the audits, Commissioner Klein said, they didn't know money was available to them, but through the audit process, they were able to help get assistance with that, or just you know, have another set of eyes, take a look at it.
Yeah, the intent of the audits is to help improve them, to better handle their finances. So hearing that is, do you want a motion, or are you just seeing consensus, since we've already voted?
It's fine for a consensus is, if you could
Mr. Downey?
Determine the funding source, whether it be reserves or the twenty-five percent from the SAFER grant.
I think we use the twenty-five percent for the SAFER grant, because that is being provided for the fire and EMS, and this is definitely for the fire and EMS.
And it does exceed the amount that we expect to need here.
You said twenty-five percent, what's that dollar amount?
It's about three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we have budgeted in FY twenty-one as a match, which we understand now will not be needed.
All right, is there a motion?
I make, I make the motion.
With the reserve.
I make the motion to provide a, or motion to move forward with the financial statement audit and agreed-upon procedures audit of the fire stations, fire companies in Washington County, and use the funding from the SAFER grant.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that with a comment, you say we voted on that before, but I think you just created a whole new motion
Yes.
to do it again, I don't want to come back and say, oh, you guys are doing something you never voted on, so if that was the intent of court's motion, which it sounded like, that we're just starting all over again here, forget a vote we may or may not have done.
Do you second it? Let's just move on.
I second it, yes.
Okay, they're just, that's part of the discussion, any more discussion?
It just, it just makes the minutes clear, if there's something you can point to that said yes, on this date, there was a vote to do this and pay for it that way.
Especially for the funding.
That's fine, that, that makes it clear. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five o, thank you very much.
Thank you, just one last comment, you, for the commissioners, I'll go ahead and write up the RFP, which includes the audit and the agreed-upon procedures, and then that'll be brought to you through the procurement process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, express approval, city of Hagerstown, Coal Road. Jill Baker, please come forward, introduce the matter.
Morning commissioners.
Good morning.
Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm bringing back to you two express approval requests for annexations within the city of Hagerstown. The first of these, just to remind you, is the express approval for three properties to be annexed along Coal Road. They include ARCP, Mount Hagerstown, Maryland LLC, Cole's Department Store, and EMAM Investment Group. Again, to remind you that when municipalities seek annexation, the counties are to review those annexations and determine whether or not those uses that are proposed under the new municipal annexation, or excuse me, zoning, are substantially similar, or whether they're substantially different from the existing county zoning. Per discussion last week, staff had recommended that the two zoning classifications between the city of Hagerstown and the county are, in our opinion, staff's opinion, substantially the same. Questions that the commissioners had last time had to do with the taxes, property taxes, and how they would change from being in the county then to being annexed into the city. I'd like to thank Sarah Greaves and her office for providing the information here. We submitted this to you, and it's included in your ARF packet, the difference between the county's tax rate when strictly county versus being in the city. So you see those numbers there, when you add up all three, which includes the Thomas Bennett Hunter that you approved last time, it's about a difference of somewhere in the vicinity of sixty-nine thousand dollars that the county would potentially lose in tax income.
That's per year?
Per year.
Okay, how much is it if you subtract out the Thomas Bennett property?
About sixty, about sixty-eight thousand, they're about a thousand dollars-ish. Now, keep in mind that right now, the assessment on the Thomas Bennett Hunter property is raw ground.
Yeah, but we've already approved that.
Yes.
That's.
Yeah, what you're meaning is they build, the property value would go up, but we've already approved it as stated.
Correct.
But also, honestly, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we deny this express approval, the taxes are gonna be adjusted anyway.
Correct.
In five years.
No, immediately.
Immediately.
They already have development on those properties, right?
They just, the five years is, if you deny express approval, they cannot exercise zoning authority over the property to change it to something that is substantially different from what the county's currently existing zoning is. It doesn't have any effect on whether the taxes are paid to the city versus the county.
You just said sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's the amount that we're gonna, we're gonna receive less. Doesn't matter if we approve or deny.
Regardless if we approve the annexation or not, we're gonna receive less.
Yes.
If we don't approve it, they can't change the zoning.
So technically, if they can't change the zoning, we penalize the owner of those properties and not anybody else.
Potentially, but keep in mind too, that the properties are developed, and I don't see them substantially changing the development on those properties. It could happen, but you're, you are correct in your statement.
I, I make the motion to.
Yeah, so, yeah, hold on, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So regardless of what we do today, we're gonna lose sixty-eight thousand dollars.
You cannot stop the annexation.
Correct.
I just thought it took five years, we would be in a position to collect sixty-eight thousand.
Unfortunately, no.
I, I still have a little heartburn that they wouldn't work with the owners and, and step the taxes over a five-year period. Because the annexation's making a hardship on the owners, they should have let them pay, but, yeah, I, I'd motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Okay, I have first and second, is there any further discussion?
I just want to comment that I would agree with Commissioner Wagner. If you look at what some of these businesses, their taxes will increase by, it's almost next to double. And a lot of these are retail stores, hotels that, you know, were closed during COVID, lost a lot of business. It, it's unfortunate, the city, you know, I understand the city standpoint, they are looking for increased revenue. That's the point of annexing, but it's, it's unfortunate for these businesses that were largely in that service or retail industry, that's, that suffered quite a bit this year.
All right, first and a second, and any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jill, I think you're up again.
So, second verse, same as the first. This is an express procedure for the city of Hagerstown regarding some out parcels along the Valley Mall parcel. These properties include Coal Road, Coal Road Holdings LLC and Valley Rural Incorporated. Again, the zonings are substantially similar, and we don't have anything else to add, again, the, the tax differences are on that sheet. You can see that they are all the same, discussion applies to this.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second the same comments.
I have first and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you commissioners.
You're welcome. Next up, Todd Moser, sewer easement abandonment, Mark Bradshaw, please come forward, introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Todd Moser, Real Property Administrator with Mark Bradshaw, Deputy Director, Division of Environmental Management, Water Quality. Sewer easement abandonment moved to approve the abandonment of sewer easement located off of Wright Road and Williamsport. Taylor Farm LLC has requested the county abandon a sewer easement on their property prior to the future development of the property. The sewer line was constructed in the nineteen sixties to transport sewage from the halfway area to the Nicodemus Wastewater Treatment Plant. In the late eighties, the county constructed the Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plant, and sewage going to the Nicodemus Wastewater Treatment Plant was redirected to the Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plant. This was done by constructing a flow diversion chamber just north of the Taylor Farm LLC property. The section of the line being proposed to abandon has not been active since flow was diverted to the Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plant in the nineteen eighties. Existing sewer line is no benefit to the county.
Motion to approve.
First and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, Chris Boggs, please introduce yourself in the matter. Next up, Chris Boggs, please introduce yourself in the matter. Thank you, gentlemen.
Chris Boggs, Land Preservation Planner, Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm here this morning to revise a previously approved project um through the commission that you, you approved back in April. The reason for this revision is that we found out after the approval that the meets and bounds for the property description on that property, uh, the Marts, La Master and Salimony did not, uh, not, weren't adequate for the purposes of the easement. So we had to order a survey um to have a, a, a better meets and bounds description available. Uh, that survey was completed and uh so now we have a new acreage. And because rural legacy easements are valued on a per acre basis, we have a new easement value as well. So the original acreage was eighty-nine point two seven acres and the original easement value was two hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred ten dollars. Uh, the new easement acreage is eighty-six point zero one seven. Uh, since that acreage is lower, the, the easement value is lower, two hundred fifty-five thousand fifty-one dollars. Uh, additionally, uh, re, uh, since then, um, we've had a slight change of ownership where uh Sonia La Master, one of the one-third owners of the property passed away. So now the property is in, in the estate of Sonia D. La Master. So that needs to be changed on all of the accompanying documents as well. So um, no recommended motion is to approve the revised agenda item for uh the Sherry D. Martz Scott G. Salimony and the estate of Sonia D. La Master deceased rural legacy easement project in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand fifty-one dollars for eighty-six point zero one seven easement acres.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, nonprofit organization request.
Commissioners, if you recall, several weeks ago, we had a hearing on a request by True North and Main Street Hancock Inc. to be added to the one dash one oh eight list. Uh, this is a list that's maintained um by the county. It is provided for by the Code of Public Local Laws and um organizations must petition by a certain time to be included on the list if they want to seek certain uh funding from the county or to be provided for in the county's budget. Inclusion on the list does not mean that they get any funding. It simply means that they are eligible uh to ask for funding. And this is uh important for some of those who are um making um application through the community organization funding committee. Uh, the public hearing was held several weeks ago. I'd asked the clerk to confirm that there were not any comments received uh regarding the applications.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Any second?
Second.
I think we're waiting on an answer from Chris to do.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, we have received an comment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt. We have first and a seconds. Are any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up, budget adjustment for the runway. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, my name is Garrison Flossinger, Director of the Hagerstown Regional Airport.
I'm Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer here for Kelsey Mays.
Uh, we want to come up for you today um and recommend, recommendation to approve the budget adjustment um for the runway project. Long story short here is when we um awarded grant sixty-three, which was for the construction of the runway, we accidentally uh overwrote um the grant sixty-nine instead of adding the two grants together. Um, and so what would this does is it, it took the grant sixty-nine out of the total project cost after it was awarded. Um, and so what we are looking to do is we're looking to add those costs back in. Um, those costs for grant fifty-nine were five hundred thousand, seven hundred, sorry, five hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Um, and the construction costs for grant sixty-three were six million, three hundred and four thousand five hundred. Uh, bringing a total project cost now to six million, s, eight hundred thousand eighty-seven dollars and eighty, sorry, and four hundred dollars. Um, the local match for grant fifty-nine was twenty-eight thousand um five hundred and thirty dollars and will be derived um from the construction portion due to um the grant sixty-three funding now is a hundred, hundred percent grant funding uh from the FAA.
Just to sum that up for you, commissioners, um, the budget adjustment in front of you is mostly grant funded. So the five hundred and seventy thousand dollars is primarily from grants and we came before you for a budget adjustment that reduced the local portion by three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Should have only reduced the local portion by two hundred ninety-six thousand. So effectively, the county has still realized savings from the hundred percent federally funded project. Um, just too much local funds was reduced.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, intergovernmental cooperative purchase, Rick Curry and Sheriff Molitor.
Good morning, Rick Curry, Director of Purchasing.
Sheriff Doug Molitor.
Seventy-four years intergovernmental cooperative purchase automated speed enforcement system. Recommended motion moved authorized by resolution and approval for the sheriff officer entered to a contract to lease an automated speed enforcement system at a cost of twenty-eight hundred dollars per month, per unit, or up to twenty-six units from RECOR Recognition System Incorporated doing business as Breckford Traffic Safety Incorporated of Hanover, Maryland, and to utilize in other jurisdictions contract as listed in the RFP that was awarded by Calvert County Department of Finance and Budget Purchasing Office and continued upon approval of the final lease agreement by the county attorney's office. The board initially awarded a traffic system back in two thousand seventeen at a cost of thirty-one hundred dollars per month. As you can see, this contract is a reduced cost. It's a one-year contract with four, one-year options to renew. The Code of Public Laws allowed this body to enter to a contract that was solicited by another jurisdiction. There is a cost savings in doing that because you have to go through the RFP process and solicitation. You have the attachments of the collection services that will be involved in the contract and also a copy of the RFP. And there's also a, a copy of the agreement for the county attorney's office to review for final acceptance if the board approves. Any questions?
I, I have a quick question. I tried reading through that whole thing. It's a lot. It's a hundred and some odd pages.
Hundred and nine pages.
So, the, the quick question that I have that I could not find the answer to, and I know I've heard this rumor, I just don't know it's true. Are the cameras active when school's not in session? So during that whole period where we were closed, are the cameras supposed to be active?
Yes. By, by Maryland state law, they can be active uh Monday through Friday from six A, I'm sorry, from six AM till uh eight PM, uh Monday through Friday.
Okay, so the, I want to dispel that rumor though. It's not, they're not off when schools shut down. So in the summer, they're still on?
That's correct.
And when schools closed, they're still on. Okay.
That's correct.
But, cause I've heard that.
They're taking it in the mail.
Yeah, I've heard that rumor. I've heard that and people are upset. They're saying, oh, I thought it was closed when school wasn't off. And I, and I tried looking for it and I couldn't find it. So thank you for clarifying that.
So on holidays, election days, yeah, I'm not gonna let you off easy, Sheriff. You know that, right?
Well, he's paying for it. So I mean.
So it's about seventy-two thousand a year plus to maintain, to rent them.
There, there's nineteen cameras. So with this.
Oh, no, there were twenty-six.
No, sir. Uh, that would be up to, right now, we have nineteen cameras active. So it would be a savings of fifty-seven hundred dollars per month uh for the cameras that we have.
And uh.
And I also want to point out too that the secondary portion of this contract is the collection service, which is exactly the same contract we have now. It's just a renewal for twenty-eight percent that they do the collections on those that do not pay.
I, I guess a couple of questions. Uh, so they maintain everything. It doesn't cost us any more money.
That's correct.
Uh, on a holiday, election day, they're, they're operating.
That's correct.
Okay, I can prove it. And uh, that uh, it used to be, maybe you clarify this. This sort of got to me. I, I, I'm not a big fan, but I.
Make a motion, let's eliminate.
Well, the, the, they used to be thirty, forty dollars and thirty-five if you paid early. Where did that?
No, that's, that's the city of Hagerstown. That is not, that is not.
Oh, that was always the city, not the county.
That's correct. And the law does not really allow for that. They're doing it anyway, but that's not what the law says. So that's why we haven't done that. Likewise, we can't add a fee to if they don't pay within a certain time period. We can't do that either by law. So.
What was the revenue last year? One point two million? Not that, I'm basing, I'm just curious.
I think twenty, Sarah sent me a message. Twenty nineteen was one point three, twenty eighteen was one point four, and so far in twenty twenty, it's seven hundred thousand. And that revenue goes where?
Right now, it's funding the Public Safety Training Center. The construction of that.
Well, I think court sort of summed it up. We're getting a lot of grief about those cameras. Well, school's not even open and the cameras are still catching us.
Well, the other thing you have to realize is that the uh Safe to Learn Act of two thousand eighteen also requires law enforcement to monitor pedestrian and vehicular traffic at the school zones. And so this is actually kind of filling that bill somewhat um for that. If not, we would have to put uh deputies there before and after school periodically to monitor the traffic as well.
So we'd have to have deputies there without the speed cameras.
That's correct.
And the intent of that was to protect the children.
That's correct.
But it seems like the intent is about revenue. That.
Well, no, it's not. Because if you think about it, Commissioner, you look at it in this way. We don't change speed limits anywhere else based on any other criteria, whether they're open or not open. So why would you do that? You're, you're allowing them to change behavior. I mean, if they're not driving twelve mile an hour over the speed limit, they don't have nothing worth to worry about. If they're doing twelve mile an hour over the speed limit, they should get a citation, in my opinion. And uh, all we're doing is, and by the way, we did not change speed limits. If you look at the one at Lappins, it's still forty mile an hour. So if they're not doing fifty-two or more, they're not going to get a citation. So I, I don't understand that philosophy of, well, you should turn it off during certain times. Uh.
But why are they at school zones then?
Well, that's what the law says.
Okay.
But, you know, it's still a twenty-five mile an hour zone in most cases. Um, it, it doesn't change. If a deputy was there, you know, monitoring it, they would actually get a ninety, ninety dollar fine and two points.
And it would cost a lot more money to provide deputies to.
That, that's correct.
Sheriff, would we ever have, not that we have a do over here, but if there was, and, and I hope it doesn't come to this, we, the pandemic worsens or schools are reclosed again or there's lockdown is, orders issued by the governor. Do we have to, can we as a county decide, okay, well, let's turn the cameras off since there's a stay-at-home order? Would that, would that be possible? I understand the law says you can place them here for the speed limit for this going over twelve miles per hour over the speed limit. But we can go underneath of that as well, right? Just like.
No, you can't.
We have to do, we have to do the speed cameras. It's all or nothing.
Right.
Same thing with, same thing with the fines. Forty dollars or nothing. We can't make it.
That's correct.
Twenty-five, thirty-five.
No, it's specifically stated in the law. We can't change that.
Okay.
Hundred, hundred percent of the money goes to the training center.
That's correct.
Under, Sheriff, you, you changed my mind on that specific part where you referenced the two thousand eighteen law about that we're required to be there. Uh, you know, I was, I was sitting here going back and forth on this because I know I personally don't like it. I know a lot of people talk about your, your right to face your accuser when you can't face your accuser if it's a computer. So I understand.
Well, actually, they can. They can still request a trial date and it would go to court. Um, and some people do. So it's not like they're not facing their computer. We have to produce the records to show that the, the speed cameras are calibrated. Uh, we have to show the um video of them going through um the uh speed zone and so forth. So they are facing their accuser.
Thank you for that information.
Sorry.
No, no, that's perfect. But no, I, uh, with us, if we have to abide by the School Safety Act, I think you said of two thousand eighteen.
That's correct.
Of the zones. For that reason, I'm, I'll move to authorize the resolution as stated.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Comments? This is all, I voted against the speed cameras because the money headed towards that training center, which bids for recently open. Uh, it's important that we have revenue to support that.
Yeah, and I like pictures of my truck, so.
I have a first and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Next up, Major Craig Rowe, Brown. Did I say that right? Hopefully.
Good morning, Major Craig Rowe, Warden, Washington County Detention Center.
Allison Hartsworn, Great Manager, Office of Great Management.
Here this morning uh to recommend a motion to move to approve the submission of a grant to the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and to accept funding as awarded. This is for the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. And the purpose of that is from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services to identify the barriers to ongoing services, provisions, and critical short-term needs as well as longer-term need to address a sustained or resumed state of emergency related to COVID nineteen. The Washington County Detention Center's program helps to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. The program that we are asking funding for is to allow our jurisdiction to address immediate and future needs in conjunction with Global Tel Link Corporation, which serves as the facility's visitation services manager and the provider of the wireless inmate tablets. Wish to expand the services to the facility by adding state-of-the-art, remote visitation for our inmate population and their families. The grant funds will provide hardware needed for monitoring, recording, and the storage of remote visits. Additionally, the facility is seeking funding to offset additional medical costs that um expenses that have been incurred during this pandemic by not enforcing the reverse per diem agreement between our facility and Prime Care Medical. The facility's medical provider, Prime Care Medical, has expended enormous energy and efforts to thwart the spread of COVID nineteen within our facility. These efforts include, too, but are not limited to, daily temperature checks of inmates, uh, care delivery uh to the housing units, testing, daily conference calls, et cetera. Due to the care provided by the medical staff workload and expensive has, have increased in order to contain and prevent the possible spread of the disease throughout the facility. The fiscal impact is that the grant will provide thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for our sheriff's office-related expenses. And uh, there's nothing that the uh county would have to match.
Motion to approve the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, need a motion to go into closed session?
Make the motion to go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.